...to utilize with the new budget process that you all put together that starts in January. So to start this off, we're going to take the words of Patrick Lencioni, who's kind of a, one of those business management gurus. He wrote a book, Five Dysfunctions of a Team. And he says that the only great measure of a great team, or a great organization, is whether it accomplishes what it sets out to accomplish. Now, that may seem very obvious, particularly to those of you who have actually spent some time in the private sector, that that is the only measure of success. But I would tell you that in government, we aren't necessarily structured like that generally. The nature of bureaucracy isn't necessarily to accomplish what it sets out to accomplish, but primarily to prevent bad things from happening. I think we may have talked about this slide before, but people really do, in a bureaucracy, focus on compliance, using audits to make sure that we're accounting for money properly, that we are treating federal rules and regs the way we should. Procedures and regulations are the standard operating procedures for the folks in a governmental bureaucracy. Now, those are all very fine things, and we certainly need to do that, but it is a much different mindset than an organization that you want to make evidence-based decisions. Okay? So, what would we want to try to accomplish with performance management? We want our organization to engage in evidence-based decision-making, i.e. using data to move policy forward, and more importantly, to understand the implications of policy. There's an element of performance accountability in this. There has to be something that drives that evidence-based decision-making to ensure that there is follow-up and that the bureaucracy is acting as we want it to. Furthermore, there needs to be an element of continuous organizational learning. People need to know more and more about their job and learn how to use data in order to drive results. That's an important component of this that can't be overlooked. And then, of course, what you're trying to get to is better results. Okay. The first part of performance management the city engaged in was the Taking Charge process. Now, I would say 99.9% of the population, probably most of the council, associates Taking Charge with the annual budget survey. But really, Taking Charge is far more than that. That's a small fraction of what it was intended to do. It actually is the foundation for a performance management system. You're setting the outcomes and goals at which you strive. You develop programming and how those programs get you to those goals, and then, most importantly of all, you develop performance indicators that measure the progress you're making towards that end. So we've been working on Taking Charge for close to 10 years and had felt pretty good about what we were doing, but then that's where What Works Cities comes into the story. Now, you may remember What Works Cities as the philanthropy developed by former New York mayor Michael Bloomberg, because he believes strongly that government could benefit from evidence-based decision-making, i.e. using data to drive results. Did a number of amazing things in New York based around that. What Works Cities accepted Lincoln, Nebraska, as one of its first 40 cities that they would work with. They ultimately planned, I think, have 200 onboard, and came to Lincoln, Nebraska, due to engagements. One, to help us with performance management and better implement it into the organization, and two, to help with the Open Data Project this council passed as part of a resolution, I believe, two years ago. Hey, Larry. Well, they came to do an evaluation of where we were at in performance management. I would tell you that myself and the team I work with, our performance management team, felt really strong and very good about where we were at. We thought we had a good story to tell these folks. A very bright group of people with their roots in a number of Ivy League universities and Johns Hopkins. But looking in the mirror sometimes can be a hard experience, and I can charitably describe the evaluation as a good old-fashioned butt-kicking. They came in, and while they appreciated what we'd done on Taking Charge, they felt like it was lacking. And what they talked about primarily is this notion of performance accountability and continuous organizational learning. We didn't have it in place. There was nothing to make sure that people were using data and evidence decision-making to drive performance in government. That was a hole in our performance management system, and we undertook a fairly significant engagement to put that in place. What resulted from that is what we call Linkstat. And Linkstat is much more the data collection analysis and the process for that continuous data review that we started under Taking Charge. Taking Charge really was a good step for us, but really, we only talk about it at budget time. And furthermore, what was really a problem is when we moved to an every-other-year budget, a biennial budget, now we're only talking about these issues of how an organization performs every other year. What Works Cities was telling us, you can't do that. It has to be a continuous conversation in order to be effective and to get the organization moving in the right direction. So just to remind you very briefly of what those outcome areas are that we do for the city. You see them here, and obviously, safety and security has been the number-one priority of the community for some time. This is in priority order from left to right, across the middle and at the bottom. This was determined by public survey a couple of times, first in 2008, then they changed and shifted a little bit in 2013, and I would assume next year we'll probably do for another reorganization. But this is the foundation of what we try to accomplish at Linkstat, is that's the ideas that we're driving at as a city.
Real quick question. Where does infrastructure fit in?
Infrastructure is probably most noticeable in effective transportation, but there are elements of environmental quality as well. Water and wastewater typically fall in environmental quality, and obviously, streets, things of that nature go to effective transportation. Okay? Performance indicators. They are the markers that help you get to those outcomes, and that is a key piece of what we're talking about. Without any idea of what you're, how you're doing, you're never going to know if you actually get there. There are 81 Taking Charge performance indicators to measure progress, and by the way, they're in continuous review, and one of the first steps of Linkstat has been to take a look at those indicators and ensure that they actually measure what we want them to measure. And there's been a process of some weeding out, so we may not be at 81 right now, but we're pretty close. And those are the things the mayor's office looks at, at the 10,000-foot view, to see how the organization is doing. Just to give you a few examples, one of our goals was to maintain the youth smoking rate at below 20%. We actually have reduced that goal because we were consistently coming under to 12%. So we're looking forward to seeing how that goes. One of the goals is increase ridership by 5% annually to increase people using alternate transportation is one of our goals. We talk a little bit about drinking water and making sure that it does not exceed federal standards for various minerals in the water. And then, one of my favorites here is the average time for graffiti removal being less than 15 days from report. I tell you that one in particular because the second we started measuring that, the time it took to actually make that happen plummeted, where it used to take several months sometimes to do this. The second you set a target and held people accountable for it, now we're down to a few days. In fact, 15 days is actually kind of a high mark for us right now. Okay. So you've got this, yes, sir. Oh, you bet. I think that seems fair.
I'd like to let you know what's going on, Dave.
Yeah, I suppose if I can run on time, too.
Okay. So you've got these foundational elements. You've got something you're aiming toward, these outcomes and the goals associated with it. You have these performance indicators that tell you how you're doing along the way. Now, how do you make sure that this is actually happening to improve performance? That's what these Linkstat meetings do. We have 12 of them each year in two groups of six. The eight outcome areas I showed you earlier are done across those six meetings. We bring people together on a Wednesday for about an hour and a half, and it's a very fast-paced discussion of about five or four to six agenda items that we have chosen based on what is happening with the data and what we're seeing in the trends. A key component of this is how the process works and really how we're going to try to work with you on the budget end of this. About 10 days prior to the meeting, the senior management of each of the departments meets, and they go through their data and try to analyze what that data is telling them and try to give us some idea of what that data says and why it's important. I cannot stress enough what a critical first step this is. If you want the organization itself to become people who use evidence-based decision-making, there has to be a point where they're actually doing it. It can't just be at this level or in the mayor's office. They themselves have to spend the time going through the data and drawing some conclusions, not only because we want them to do that, but because they're the subject matter experts that really have, we have to rely upon to give us some guidance here. So as they fill out what we call a pre-memo forum, they're talking to each other about what their data says, and they put together in an online forum a lot of the information that we need or the analysis we need to make decisions about what happens in that meeting. You see here the pre-memo report for safety and security, and what I've handed out to you all is an actual pre-memo from an actual meeting that was held on June 14th. Actually, I think we ended up holding that in August, on the safety and security topics. Right up front, what you'll notice when you look through these forums is the features and how then we decide this becomes a topic for a meeting. If you look to the far right of this slide or the far right of the page that you're on, there are trend lines. And what the trend line tells you is, are things going well? Are things not on pace for where they should be? Now, this is just an example we use for training on injury, traffic, crash rate. But the trend line has actual good data. In short, blue is good, red isn't so great, particularly when it's pointing down. You see to the left of that, that the current year's number is in place and how it compares to the actual goal. But I think the key thing for us in this question is what it says in the analysis section. Okay? The analysis section is very important to decision-makers, because that's what the department is telling you is happening with that indicator. Now, this is completely made up here. We just did it as an example, but it's an example of the type of things that we get back. Okay? The data trend is good, but what we're telling you is in southwest Lincoln, there seems to be more of these traffic accidents than other parts of the city, but we don't think it necessarily means anything or correlates with any policy condition change. That's really important information, because you then have to decide, do I really need a policy change, or is this something that's going to sort itself out? And because it's recorded, we can follow up on it at the next meeting to see if what those folks' analysis told us actually turned out to be true. So that brings in the performance accountability measure that I mentioned earlier. That's a key component of this. Okay, showing you a little bit more here. This is one for the National Standard for Turnout Time for Life-Threatening Events at LFR. And turnout time, I'm sure as you all know, is the time between the bell rings and the station for a 911 call and when our firefighter paramedics have actually reached their vehicles and left the station. That's a good thing to analyze to make sure that your response times are adequate. Now, you'll see here, however, that the trend has not been particularly good on this with our goal. The goal was to be at that national standard, 90% of the time, we're only at about 68%. The trend line hasn't been excellent. However, the fire chief said, look, this is a good topic for us to have a discussion on at the Linkstat level. So you'll note there at the far right, the chief to Spain at this point, although this was made up at the time, did say, look, this should be an agenda item at the Linkstat meeting. Okay? You see the analysis that put place. Again, this is just kind of placeholder stuff, not to call anyone out, about what we might say in terms of the analysis and how it divides between stations. In short, we've asked our people to take a deeper dive into the 10,000 look at the data and try to give us some analysis as to why this is happening the way it's happening and what we should be looking for as policymakers for change. Now, the final piece of this is really, really critical. The recommendations for action, let me see if I have the next slide here. Okay. Come from these folks. They tell us, what are we going to do to try to solve this problem? Okay? That is an important step in the Linkstat process, is the discussion about what we're going to do as a group to try to improve this data. And that's made at the department level, but there's another piece of this. I'll show you when we go on. So what does this all boil down to? We then develop an agenda at the mayor's office based on what has been told to us. Okay? So the meeting format pretty much starts the same. We usually have a quick summary of where we're at, and then we look at past agenda items. Now, I told you just a little bit earlier that one of the nice features about having a website that is continuously rolling the information is, we have a set record that we can look back on and follow up on to make sure the departments have said, done what they said they were going to do, or that further discussion we can have to see where we're at. Now, just to show you a couple of things, we usually spend about five minutes on each one and just do a check-in on a piece of information, just to make sure that what was said was being done is actually happening. Then we usually turn our attention to three to four much bigger agenda items that we've selected for the first time, where the departments then come and give a fairly extensive presentation, followed by the most rapid set of questioning you have ever seen from the other directors and the mayor's staff in the room, because the whole idea here is to improve process, to make things better. So questions are a key portion of this. You want to get to the root of the problem and what might need to happen to make better policy. Now, I should tell you, not all the agenda items necessarily have bad data trends. Frankly, most of our data trends are very positive, but you certainly want to learn from your success as well as learn from things that you can do better. So we try to make it a little bit of a mix, in part because we don't want the staff to sit there and feel like we're beating them up time and again, particularly when they are bringing some good things to the table. Then you can see at the very end of this, the action plans. Coming away from that, we might say to ourselves, okay, the recommendations from the fire chief are outstanding here in the fire, senior administration. Those are going to be the recommendations for action that come out of that meeting that we, the administration, is making you, the department directors, responsible for. Okay? Or what we find is during the meeting, a number of things come out that then we want to have follow-up. In short, new information emerges from the dialogue between the department directors and the actual people presenting. So let me give you three examples that I think help drive this. We think this has been wildly successful. I'm just going to give you a few examples, two of them small, one of them rather large. One of the things that we found out is this does promote a level of interdepartmental cooperation in a way that was not necessarily happening as well as before Linkstat. And one of the reasons is, you get everyone in a room talking about a similar issue that they have an interest in. Okay? It's natural by definition. That wasn't necessarily always happening. A good example of that was when Public Works was doing a presentation on maintaining street numbers, the lanes of street miles across the city and what progress we were making. When the Parks Department started talking about the 13 miles of street they maintain and whether there were some opportunities for some efficiencies if we were to look at those 13 miles within context of the greater whole. Now, obviously, the road through a park might be a different transportation route than on a main arterial, but it was a good discussion on, look, is there a better way to do these things more efficiently, as our parks peoples aren't necessarily experts in roads? That's an example of interdepartmental cooperation promotes. Another smaller example is in one of the departments, we found out that we had an employee that was a little bit technology-averse and that the data we were seeing was pretty low. Well, the deeper dive into the data exposed the fact that the technology-averse employee had not been properly filling out the data on a particular indicator. And that's important to all of us, because when I come to you and say, we need X number of dollars to improve this, the data had better be correct. We were able to correct that indicator, and it moved right back up, and we might not have discovered that at all had it not been for this process. So right there, it improves the type of information that we're all receiving, because there's continuous examination. Now for the really big one. You're going to get briefed on this a little bit later. I'm glad Mr. Lanis is here. But we had a very interesting discussion during the livable neighborhoods outcome about homeownership. Dave did a terrific job presenting on the standard we use on homeownership, and that it was actually falling. The percentage had gone down several points from the last time we measured. Dave also presented some supporting information which showed, in part, this trend was happening, because it was part of a larger national trend where millennials aren't as likely to buy a house as maybe people of a different generation. That's just not what they do. They prefer to be a little more unfettered than those of us who apparently are going to slave away their mortgage for the next 20 years. Furthermore, in the discussion, it became clear that the small amount of federal money that we are spending to encourage homeownership isn't going to move the needle either. Now, when you have those situations, you have to ask yourself, A, should we change the target? Or B, are we aiming at the right goal? And that is an important question. Where this led was a discussion about, look, what are we trying to accomplish by this homeownership money? I mean, it's not moving the needle on the indicator. Maybe there's something else we're trying to get done. And it occurred to us, really what we're trying to get done is to make those neighborhoods livable. And that was a much wider concern than just homeownership. It involves investment, keeping the sidewalks up, making sure streets are paved, the neighborhood park is in good order, that problem properties are brought into compliance. And where this ultimately led is to a discussion about how we intend to reorganize the urban development department along two main ideas. One in this liberal neighborhoods outcome, where we'll have a person responsible for coordination of not only the money on the housing side, but working with the other departments on the other issues I said, so that we can have maximum impact in a single neighborhood. Now, those dollars that would have been scattered throughout the city on homeownership can help be directed at an area with some other dollars and show considerable improvement based on a neighborhood action plan. That's kind of the model we're working on. We haven't finished it completely, and there's a couple other things I'd like to tell you about in economic development, but in the interest of, excuse me, on economic opportunity, but in the interest of time, I'll leave that for another day. But the point is this. The discussion about how to make urban development more effective, how to narrow their mission to be more effective, does not happen without this examination of the data during a Linkstat discussion, and it's an important one. Okay. So how do we tie this all in to the reason I'm actually here? You all passed a resolution on March 27th, 2017, 17R16. I'm sure Ms. Gaylor Brad recognized it, as I believe she was the author, that lays out the new process for an earlier touch with the budget with the council. And it talks about performance indicators and relevant data that go to the heart of whether we're achieving our goals and outcomes, and what programming changes may be need to be done to reach those goals and outcomes, and what other trends are associated with the budget. It's at this point that would call your attention, the document I just handed out, if you all could just flip to page three. Yeah? Okay. Right in the middle of the page, it says, "LFR ambulances will arrive at medical emergency calls within eight minutes at least 90% of the time." Everyone, everyone found that? All right. Listen, this is a topic we got to talk about, and we need to talk about it at this next budget meeting. You see the trend line. We're not quite getting there the 90% of the time, although we did pretty decent in 2016. But if you flip to the next page four, you'll see what we've been talking about and why this should be a concern to you. If you look at action steps from the previous Linkstat meeting, you see that we're actively talking with the fire chief about a 24-hour seventh medical unit versus both a seventh medical unit and an eighth medical unit. That's a budget issue, and it's being brought to your attention because what the data says is, we have a problem. This may not be the solution that we want to engage in as policymakers, but it gives us a place to start in talking about what we want to do in the budget to address this issue. In short, this process identifies places where we need to get better, and allows us to have a discussion about the resources and policy choices we want to make to meet that need and why I think it fits very well with what you're talking about here. I would recommend to you that that would be an agenda item. Now, you see the calendar here that was put together, starting in the middle of January, where we would hit each of the outcome areas for a discussion. What I would recommend to all of you, and I think this is an ongoing discussion more than it is us saying, hey, this is what we're going to come out of this meeting with, is about 10 days prior to when that meeting is scheduled, you know, the week of the 15th, we would send you this document, the pre-memo, okay, that has all the trends, and we'd probably send you a recommended agenda, because I'd work with directors to do that, and say, okay, here are a few things that we think are really relevant to what's coming up at the 10,000-foot level of issues we need to introduce. Then at the city council meeting the week prior to that, I'd like to sit down with you all and then talk through that agenda, where you say, yes, no, hey, Rick, what we saw in here that concerns us, we'd like to see addressed that day, and try to hammer something out that we all feel would be a good discussion for that meeting. So I don't know if you necessarily need to do too much more on that at this point, but that's kind of the initial recommendation we would have. These meetings work pretty well if you're in the hour and a half, two-hour range. I think you need to tell us what you can tolerate at a time and what you're willing to do. We can probably get through three or four really big subjects, or five or six smaller ones, depending upon what is on the council's mind. And I just want to take just one more moment to tell you that we haven't spent any money on this. You've got to understand something, that communities all over the nation sometimes have departments of three or four people that spend time on this. But I've been fortunate, because I have a group of people that are so committed to doing something with this, that they're just doing this in their spare time. And we've been able to make an incredible amount of progress from just those folks, and I would be totally remiss if I did not point out the bottom name, Raju Kukarlapudi, the Health Department's epidemiologist. Now, I don't know what an epidemiologist does, but I do know this. The man is a data wizard. He developed the system we use to make this whole thing happen. Raju is just a blessing and one of those people in city government that makes you feel really good about being in city government, and this would not work without his technical expertise and skill set at getting this done. Okay, I've talked enough. I'm sure you might have some questions, comments, complaints?
Questions for...
Sure. Thank you. Thanks for this presentation. So I found myself wondering, because you were talking about the agendas for the Linkstat meetings, like, are you, do you basically, in those meetings, do one outcome goal at a time?
No. We tip, well, the big ones, we do. We do it just like this. Okay? So safety and security is a big enough issue. We do it by itself. Typically, we combine efficient transportation, environmental quality, and John, you asked a very salient question in that regard, because the infrastructure needs are pretty close together. So we typically take those two together, and accountable government identity in Lincoln are just small enough that they fit nicely together. They're just, they're just not real big outcome areas with a lot of programming. So that's typically how we do this. We find that it's worked okay the first two rounds to go that route.
So, and I may have missed this, and I apologize if I did. So how often are you having those meetings?
We're doing this twice a year, kind of in the January, February timeframe, and then again, we just complete a round during the summer. And we probably hold a set of these meetings internally before we came to you, just to make sure we interact together just a little bit before we showed up for the, for the big dance.
Thank you.
Epidemiologists, they're health, public health professionals who investigate patterns and causes of the disease and injury in humans.
And that's why he's a data freak.
I'm not done. They seek to reduce the risk in occurrence, I'm sorry, sir, of negative health outcomes through research, community education, and health policy.
If you were to replace health with city government in every sentence there, I think that would describe what he's doing for us with Linkstat.
How much have the indicators evolved since you started this process? Obviously, there are going to be ones that are kind of slammed up, easy to include, and then others that may highlight strengths of departments, may expose weaknesses. Like, what kind of debate or discussion have you had to cover about what to include?
Oh goodness, how much time do you have? That's all we do. I mean, a lot of, I should back up. It's not all we do. I've just talked to you about other things. But that's a significant discussion point. Are you actually measuring what you're setting out to do is a huge component of the discussions. We talk a lot about, okay, is this understandable to the average person? Without calling out any names, but our good friends, the engineers, sometimes pick out indicators that are difficult for simple people like me in the policy side to understand. We work to try to make them more recognizable to the public. Then there's the, the notion of, how do you phrase things has a real impact on the measure? And we talk a lot about the targets. I had mentioned to you that after we beat the 20% rate on youth smoking, that we moved it down to 12%. We have a lot of discussion about what the target should be in relationship to what we're seeing in the data, because you don't want to set the goal this high and then come in under it. That doesn't really encourage good performance. You want these, these things to be right about here, so we encourage people to perform. But those are a few examples of the things we go over almost continuously.
Are there plans to have more of the Linkstat meetings and reviews? It seems like twice a year isn't very, it doesn't seem frequent enough.
That will depend, in part, on what we decide as a group to do. One of the things that clearly is happening is our ability to manage something this big is starting to exceed our capacity. We need people dedicated to the data side. Keep in mind, most of our data is annual that we're viewing, so really, other than, than the stuff out of health, police, and fire, the needle isn't moving very much on a lot of these. Okay? So it really doesn't make sense then to come in and have the same discussion on the same data repeatedly. We do try to get more data, but the point being that I think we're going to have to make a commitment to somebody whose job it is to do the data exclusively in order for us then to have the meetings more frequently. I would tell you that other jurisdictions do them quarterly, but it is not in, we're not unheard of. Most of them kind of do it on a twice-a-year cycle. I would tell you that as good as Raju is, your definition of epidemiologist, he's doing important work outside of this, and we probably better let him do it. Otherwise, I'd say, hey, we should set Raju loose on this.
So Rick, how often do the departments actually deal with the data that they're collecting? And how often do the departments actually review it? They don't just, I guess, cram and get it done for that, that biennial meeting, do they, or?
There is a couple of points. And I'm actually going to invite a couple of the directors if they want to come up and say something to talk about it in a moment. But there's at least two times a year before the meetings where they have to talk about it, but it's happening much more frequently than that, in part because the performance management team is continuously sending out directives. We meet every, every two weeks, review our data and the changes that we've suggested, and have contact with them. I can also tell you that it's been noticeable during other meetings that we've been at, that these folks now are clearly discussing their data more often as a result of the changes that have been made. that have been made. May I, Mr. Landis, I thought you were going to maybe say a couple of things if anyone else wants to jump up and give some perspective. I think that would be good.
This process forced us to think about how we were organized, and when we looked at our organization chart and compared it to the Linkstat and taking charge work, we found that there really was not a good alignment. Our department has grown up over time, based pretty much on revenue source. Section of parking, well, that's a revenue stream. Then we have the CDBG money, and that goes to generally community development. Then we have the home money, and that goes to the housing area. Then we have the Department of Labor money, and that goes to the AJC. In other words, only one out of every $30 that my department spends comes from the general fund. The other 29 comes from some other revenue source, mostly federal money and parking money. But the truth of the matter is, when you compare it to the taking charge ideas, there's two big ideas that we do. One is livable neighborhoods, and one is economic development. Yes, we want parking, but it serves economic development. Yes, we do tax increment financing, but it serves economic development. We were doing workforce development, it served economic development. We were also doing work in housing, and we were also doing the CDBG and some resources there. When we were done, when we started looking at the indicators, we found that the indicators were measuring federal fund performance, but not necessarily this underlying goal. And then that asked us if we were organized around those. One of the things that we'd like to do is, we'd like to merge the community development section of the department with the housing department and section, and make that the livable neighborhoods area, and then charge them with the responsibility of reaching out to the Parks Department, to the Public Works Department, to the Health Department, to find ways in which we can not only cluster some of the work that we're doing on housing, but cluster that with some of the work that we're doing in parks, cluster that perhaps with work in sidewalks and street trees, so that a neighborhood wouldn't see one drive-by kind of experience, but a layering of some of those services. This is designed to reorganize what we do against the eight ideas of taking charge, rather than the revenue sources of how money comes to us from the federal government, or from the parking enterprise, or from the general fund. And that was all conditioned by first looking at the data, then comparing that with other departments, and then asking ourselves, were we well organized to do our work against the system that you've just seen? And we are in the process now. We've nominated that, it's at the mayoral level, as we rework our department on that basis.
So I guess, Dave, how, but how often do you revisit the idea of assessing and evaluating your data internally with your team, based on aligning some of the criteria of how you do your business for the city?
I would say those two times and maybe one or two more times a year. We don't do it on a monthly basis. We have found that when we've done it, it's prompted us to think bigger, not smaller, in a sense. We've been doing housing the same way for years and years and years. What we didn't realize was that everything that we were doing was based on homeownership. And that's great, because livable neighborhoods do have a high, you know, they have a good mix of homeownership and rental. The difficulty is that the demographics tell us that we are moving to more and more rental, and my department does nothing with its federal monies for rental. In other words, it's forced us to say, if you were looking at the prosperous Lincoln agenda, the pockets of poverty that we have, they happen to overlap oftentimes with older and not particularly well-managed rental units, and the federal money that we're spending isn't being spent in that area, it's being spent in homeownership. So while we visit that data three, four times a year, the lingering issue of, what is it that we can do about affordable housing? And we don't have real easy options here. We may have policy agenda over time that'll come back to you, but it makes us ask whether what we've been doing for so long and for that rationale continues to make sense, or should we develop new policy? And that part of it stretches out in time. So we don't check every month, but when the data gives us an interesting problem, we work down the problem.
Okay, John?
Two questions, Mr. Hoffey. First, toward the end, you were talking about all the digging into the data and so forth, and it reminds me of the old saying of "analysis by paralysis," or paralysis by analysis, I guess, whichever way. And I know I've seen an organization before where they got so much down into there and doing all these models on the computer and just changing your assumptions and all, that it really becomes less meaningful. And so I guess I would just raise that as an idea, and I think that sometimes, not sometimes, but it's also important to couple that with stepping back on the overall picture on things. And a good example, I'd say, since you talked about public safety, and I've preached this for years, and I keep talking to Chief De Spain about it, but, you know, adding a seventh ambulance full-time, I still don't hear any talk about stepping back and saying, "What about doing the ERVs? What about looking at the protocols and not sending the fire engine every time, so we don't take a station out of service?" I don't see that element. It seems like you're getting down to the 3,000 and 5,000 level and missing the 10,000 to 30,000 analysis. Maybe I'm wrong, but anyway, I just bring that up as an example. The other thing I wanted to ask, I don't know if you have any comments on that?
I would say, actually, that that is the conversation that was had during the Linkstat when Chief De Spain talked about this. What are the other alternatives? Why are we settling on this course of action? How is it superior to what you're pointing? Mr. Kemp, I've known you a while. There was a reason I pointed that out. Yes, that was part of the discussion, and Chief De Spain, I think, needs to be able to defend that in front of you all. That's a topic that comes up, and I'm sure he's prepared to do it.
So what I was saying?
Well, I don't want you to...
I have asked the Chief De Spain give a presentation here in a pre-council that he gave, I saw him give from another organization. It was revealing to me, and I think it will be to everyone here, so that's coming.
Okay. Good. Well, we'll look forward to that, and the chief has reached out to me about meeting individually. The other thing I was going to say, and you got the slide up there, which I appreciate, you've had the 2008 and 2013 surveys that came up with these order of budget outcomes and so forth. And I guess I would ask the question, so the, you get these through the analysis of all the different survey questions and so forth. Is there ever a time taken to step back and say, "Okay, this is what we've got on these surveys. They're not totally scientific, per se, but they're just, they're whoever responds." But step back, and I guess a gleaming, a glaring one to me is the low threshold for infrastructure. I mean, the others are very good, but, I mean, safety and security, definitely number one and two. I have no problem with that, but I, I don't see the infrastructure, and it's not a very flashy thing, but we've got some real challenges there. And it seems to me that that might be an example, that looking at these surveys, would it, and maybe I'm just injecting my own personal philosophy here, but I think maybe we step back and say, "Okay, this is what the survey said, but we, as far as the administration and the city council, if we come to agreement, would think, well, you know, maybe number two ought to be the infrastructure, because that also facilitates all the others."
I would love it if I could get this council to pass a resolution once every couple of years that set this. I mean, yeah, I agree with you. I think it should be a conversation between us and you with public input about what's important, because we do use this to set the program prioritization that we put in front of you. And it would really be nice to have that participation. Now, there's been various levels of skepticism over the years about taking charge, so I understand why that hasn't happened. But I agree with you. I'd love to see that happen. I think it would be a very good and helpful discussion to the public and to the administration and to the council.
But I think it's a subsequent dialogue to the survey to really discuss, you know, discuss really what we mean and maybe pull out some things. It's not overriding the survey, per se, but it may be a group consensus where you get the elected officials and the directors and so forth.
My colleague would tell you, John Carlson, that if you look at the goals on the website that are under each of these, there's an element of infrastructure in virtually every one. But the ones we most, we're most familiar with when we talk about infrastructure in terms of transportation and water and wastewater are in the, in the two that I mentioned.
Thank you.
Other questions? Carl?
Yeah. So Rick, you indicated that in your meetings with other communities, that other communities have staff that are doing...
Yes.
...a lot of this work that we're just piling on our existing staff to give them one more thing to do. What are some kind of models that you're seeing of how different cities are staffing this work?
Well, you know, it kind of depends on which direction you want to go. You know, there's, there's data analysts you can put, you can locate in the finance department to serve all departments, manage this and do some other projects. Many communities also then hire what's called an innovation manager, who runs this kind of system, and then also looks from the basis of data analysis for opportunities to reorganize or implement some sort of change in policy. There are a couple of ways to go. What I would tell you is, if you are interested in this, and you think it's something we should be thinking about as a city, and I would tell you from my travels, this is the way the world's going, and we need to be part of it. Where it's located now is not the best, because if I stepped off a curb tomorrow and got hit by a bus, and please don't make cheer, I'm not sure how much, I'm not sure how much farther this would go. Okay? Because I'm kind of driving at this point, and it would really be good to get someone who is part of the more permanent senior leadership than someone that's a political appointee leading the show here.
Just a follow-up on that. So for instance, Louisville has, and they're a leader in performance management and open data, and they have a chief of civic innovation and technology, like someone who came from the private sector and took over that role and helps us in taking open data beyond just publication, but utilizing it for, you know, internal improvements through these kind of processes, so, and working with the private sector quite often. You know, they, Louisville has a university there, they've got a kind of an innovation space that's on campus that the city helps support, so.
There are a bunch of ways to do this. We flirted with talking to the Public Policy Center, who we partner with on the survey, about getting some people that may be looking for an interesting grad student project to do some data analysis for us, just haven't had time to get around it, because it's a pretty time-consuming and detail-oriented process. But I think that speaks the need to have someone really focusing on it.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you all.
Thank you. And we will begin our director's meeting in about 15 minutes.